To join me in prayer, please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather here together. We pray for your guidance to make us, help us make great decisions for our students and employees here in HCC SC District. Please be with the loved ones that are serving in our armed services and protect them from harm's way as they protect us. And also, please be with those in the fires in Australia. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to do a call to order. Take a roll call. Mrs. Gray?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Chris Jansen?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Warpup?
Here.
Mr. Yarker?
Here.
Okay, we'll go to item five, revision of the agenda. I have one revision to the agenda, that is to remove item E1, is that student handbooks for 2020, 2021. And the reason is, we would like to put our information about the new student device. That information is not correct. However, we have corrected all the information dealing with discipline. All those have been cleaned up with our handbook committees for both middle school, elementary, and the high school. But we're asking to remove that item. We still need to address what that device will look like as far as a family-owned device, what the charges will be, as we have not come up with those. So I'm asking to remove item E1 and need action on this item.
Make a motion to remove item E1 from the agenda?
Second.
I need a second?
We got a second.
Second? Okay. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion? Okay, if we could have a vote? Okay, item passes seven to zero. Yes, we'll move on to school board reorganization. And number one is the nomination for president. Do I have a motion to nominate a person for president?
I'll make a motion to keep all three of the board officers the same as last year. I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry, Mrs. Gray. That was intended to make it easier.
Okay.
And we did that last year.
Okay, if I could... Okay?
So while she's typing, I should have asked this earlier. So if I go ahead and start reading some of the handbook changes, I'm okay to do that? The only thing that's probably going to change is just the technology.
That is correct. Yes. And we will bring that back in the first of February for two reads again. But you'll have that, the only thing that will be amended to that will be the device.
Okay.
So if you want to dig into those, please do so. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Okay, so on item three, election of president, I'm putting a motion in to elect Matt Roth as president, Brian Warpup as vice president, and Gary McClellan as secretary for 2020. Kevin Yarker made the motion, Gary McClellan second, and we'll take the vote on that one.
Yep, we'll need a vote?
Brian Warpup seconded.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, if we could have a roll call? Okay, seven oh is the vote for our officers, President Mr. Matt Roth, Vice President Mr. Warpup, and Secretary Mr. McClellan. So congratulations. So we'll turn over the meeting to Mr. Roth.
All right, thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. I think that takes us to item B10, appointment of treasurer. And I think we have a recommendation to appoint Mrs. Adet Eckert as treasurer. If anyone would like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Adet Eckert as treasurer.
And is there a second?
Second. Gary can have.
Any questions or discussion regarding that appointment? All right, hearing none. We'll vote on the motion to appoint Adet Eckert as treasurer. All right, motion passes seven zero. Move on to item B11, board members' compensation. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding compensation for 2020?
I'll make a motion that we keep our compensation the same as 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on that motion. All right, that motion also passes seven zero. We'll move on to B12, appointment of legislative liaison. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding filling that position?
I'll make the motion to retain Reed Christi Hansen as the legislative liaison for 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comment? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All right, that motion passes seven zero. Move on to B13, appointment of bid opening committee. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding that item?
I'll make a motion that Scott Bumgardner, Adet Eckert, and Chad Doherty be on the bid opening committee.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion? All right, here...
Only to describe exactly what the bid opening committee is?
Sure.
The bid opening committee is a group of people that come together any time that we solicit bids, such as we did on roofs, such as we will hopefully do tonight, about a device. Anything over $150,000 purchase of the school district requires us to go out to bid. And this is just showing which members of the school district will be involved when it comes to opening those bids.
Thanks, Mr. Bumgardner. Any other questions? All right, we'll vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero. So move on to B14, appointment of common wage committee. And we have a recommendation of Mr. Bumgardner. Would anyone like to make a motion on that appointment?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Bumgardner for the common wage committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments regarding that appointment? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to appoint Mr. Bumgardner. And that motion passes seven zero. So move on to C1, items from visitors, public comment. I don't have anyone that has signed up to address the board. If there is anyone, now is the opportunity. And you can come forward to the microphone here. All right, no one having come forward. Move on to item D1, core values discussion. Mr. Doherty?
Yeah, tonight I'd like to lead off with our core values and congratulate our Huntington North High School girls varsity and JV, who both won the Warsaw Invitational. And I just looked it up, and our girls varsity basketball record is currently 13 and four. So just having a great year, and hopefully we can all get out and watch them play as they wind up their season.
Excited to share out the S3DA archery team competed in the first Northern Regional Indiana Scholastic 3D Archery Shoot, the regional qualifier that was held in Jay County. High school male pins, Tanner Ballinger placed first, Drew Miller placed second, Kayden Meredith placed third, sweeping the competition. And high school female pins, Abby Buckberry placed first, Cindy Wilson placed second, and Lizzy Preston placed third, also sweeping the competition. Therefore, the high school team won their competition. In recurve, Kylie Hathaway and Jared Richards placed first, Kira Klepper placed first in the middle school female open, and Hannah Cooper placed third in the middle school female shooters. Isaiah Moberly placed first in his category for elementary school shooters. These are, these awards are examples of high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. And I will happen to say, in my six months on the job, I have been to Bass and Bucks and Wall Bash to get archery supplies for our trailers that we have in the district and the program that we have here in Huntington County Community Schools. Really cool program. So congratulations to our archery team.
The core value that I have relates to kind of some, some issues that we had on Christmas Day, the fire at Horseman. And during that time of adversity, I'd like to really thank a lot of teachers stepped up in trying to help in moving classrooms, and we had one classroom which the fire was in. And we had, we had several teachers, Kathy Smith, Amy Diggits, Melissa Ross, Darla Kingery, Callie Lorenz, and Lisa Merriman. They helped, all helped move classrooms and clean and tried to help make sure that our students were ready to go on the first day back from break. And so we're excited about being ready. Probably in six to eight weeks, that classroom will be ready. So only one classroom was affected during that time. And again, that's just an example of everyone's working together to try to make sure we have a safe learning environment for our students then come back. Number four, I'd like to give a shout out to our Purdue Extension educator for Ag Culture and Natural Resources, Mr. Ed Ferris, HCC SC, Dave Harvey, and Ruth Ann Russ, teachers at Huntington North High School. And they are the sponsors of Huntington Youth Leadership. And along with Mr. Bumgardner, Mr. Peters, Beth Husband, Vanessa Fields, Patty Broadbeck, and Tom Ashley, we were able to do a interview session and an etiquette lunch with all of the 25 members of HYL. So we really appreciate everybody working together, trying to, trying to make a great experience for those students. So it was a great day. We talked about what are some great things to look in for an interview, how to prepare for an interview, put a presentation together, and then we had a panel. And then we actually, each student was able to get two 15-minute interviews with our directors in HCC SC. And then they were able to have an etiquette lunch. So a big thank you to the Purdue Extension and also to Dave Harvey and Ruth Ann Russ. And that's all we have for core values. I don't know if the board has anything else to share?
Nope, okay. Move on to item E2, as we removed E1 from the agenda. E2 is a request permission to advertise for one-to-one student device refresh?
Yes, at this time, Mr. Roth, Mr. Peters, myself, and Mr. Bumgardner will give a presentation. And Mr. Peters will start off.
Okay, if you may, if I may just sit here, if that's okay, right here where I'm at. Just want to kind of give you an idea of what has taken place in the district. And I, we always refer to it before Jay. That was before I came on board. But I want to shout out to Mr. Bumgardner, Mr. Doherty, and Mr. Ashley. Special thanks for their leadership and their commitment during the work of the Vision 2020 Committee. Tonight's presentation, we'll be sharing with you information about where we have been and our plan in the future as moving forward with technology in our district. I can tell you that in January 2019, a year ago, the Vision 2020 Committee was developed with teachers and administrators across the district as a part of the upcoming device refresh cycle that we are currently going to be talking about with you tonight. And preparing our students for success in the 21st century, the district's learning initiative, it offered a blueprint for reviewing, updating, and improving the one-to-one technology program that exists today in our district. We have talked about a blended learning environment in our classrooms. And when we talk about that blended learning environment, we're talking about a combination of face-to-face interaction with teachers and students, as well as the online learning to enhance our student digital communication skills that will better prepare them for college, career, and life readiness pathways after graduation. The framework that they develop consists of seven core values and core beliefs that we still hold true today. They are leadership, funding, digital content, infrastructure, professional development, results, and communication. And I will not go through each one of those slides with you. You can read that at your leisure. But that's the basis for this 21st century framework. I will tell you in our district, the second slide, when it talks about our vision, mission, and vision, this is what we're about as a district. One team, one goal, student success for all. And whatever we do, whether it's technology or curriculum, that has got to be the center and the focus of what we do. You can see our vision statement. In technology, in a technology-rich environment, we are committed to inspiring our students through meaningful learning opportunities that foster collaboration, creativity, communication, and critical thinking. And you'll, you'll see those four words in our blended learning environment that we have in our district. The next slide probably says it all and truly is what we're about, is central office has developed this vision for learning this year, our moral purpose. The reason what we do, and we could, we could take the entire board meeting and probably just focus on our vision for learning, and we could have some rich conversations. But the moral purpose of our district is to educate all students to high standards. And we do that with precision, where each student is at. We do it with personalization. And then we wrap that with professional learning. And you see the four core values that we have around the creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration that surrounds that mission and vision and moral purpose about what we are as a district. And again, you can take a look at the slides. Those core beliefs are still a part of our district's 21st century learning initiative. And we continue to hold those values true and those beliefs true as we move forward in supporting our students and teachers' technology needs.
If we could, Mrs. Gray, if you could, go down to slide number eight. What we are going to see here is going through just professional development, but going down to the process and how, where we're at with the one-to-one. Mr. Peters did a great job of taking over. Right there. So the process was setting a realistic timeline. We start back in January of 2019 with a committee of middle school and high school teachers. Also, the professional development coordinators were involved with that. So we sat down and talked about what does a device do? Does a device improve student achievement? We all know that it does not improve student achievement. We know it's about the teacher. And a device is something to help stu, with that blended learning model you're talking about, online and also with brick and mortar with the teacher. So we talked about that. We also talked about with our teachers, the one thing that they would like to see is some, being able to have some curriculum. I think when this is first rolled out, when you're talking a MacBook, you're looking at, that is a textbook for, that is the only device, only thing that teachers will get, and they'll have to create their own curriculum. The one thing that we're seeing across the district, one of the boards would like to see is that equity and access. Well, having equity and access is being able to have the same type of resources across the district. Mr. Peters has been able to, we started last year with our reading initiative with Fontis and Pedal. So everybody has the same, when we refresh those materials, everybody has access to those materials. So when we're looking at this, the one thing we first talked about in our meeting was, we can be device poor and just have one device and not have any resources. However, can we have a device and also have some resources for our teachers? And so that was one thing that we looked at, we thought was very important. And most of our, all of our teachers agreed that they would like to have some resources. You know, when you're looking at social studies and science and looking at some, refreshing some of their resources. We just don't want to be device poor. So when we looked at refreshing, we looked at those things and took all those things into consideration. So the other piece of this we looked at and we heard from a lot of our constituents was TBR costs. When you look at a MacBook Air, it's $175 plus $50 for a break-fix fee. So you're looking at $225 that a parent in middle school and high school would pay. If you have multiple children, I do, you're paying a lot of money for TBR. And so that was something that we heard from a lot of our constituents when we were doing, talking about the high school. And some people talked about TBR. And I know this has been something the board would like to see our TBR costs going. So we looked, took that into consideration. So when you look at this, dividing the process, so we refocused and said, how can we still have a good device that will do everything that we want it to do? At the high school, they use a device that has to be very powerful because they do digital design, has to be able to run Adobe. So can we find a device that can run the programs they want at the high school and still be effective and efficient for our students and our staff? So they can still be able to deliver those, those resources? Go ahead, Cindy, if you want to. So when you look at the timeline here, we started in February, and then in April, we discussed device capabilities. Mr. Peters came in and took the reins and did a great job of bringing the same committee together in September. They met again in October, and Mr. Ashley was part of this discussion with technology. And then in December, we met again with small groups to listen to feedback and recommendations. The one thing that we looked at, when you're looking at a device, is you have Apple, which is considered to be the best device, depending on what you, what you want to be able to use. And then you have an HP, and then you have a Chromebook. Chromebook is probably the cheaper version. We did look at the Chromebook, but it would not quite do what we wanted to do at the high school as far as devices. So we looked at HP devices, so the HP with, with a Windows device. And that's one of the things we pulled off, that E1 tag on there, because we wanted to make sure when we put that into the student handbook, that we had all of the information correctly for you when we go in to post those handbooks, when we go in to do online registration. So when you look at this process, people had their, their right to go ahead and give us their feedback. We had devices in the hands. We had Chromebooks. We had HP devices and Windows devices in the hands of teachers that were given out by the PD coaches, which were Deb Doherty and also Lynn Brown. They met, the committee met with teachers, and then they brought that feedback to Mr. Peters. So then this kind of led us down this road. So this has been a year-long process about refreshing. And so that's where we're at right now at this point. So I want Mr. Bumgardner to talk a little about what, what's that going to look like, the device and costs and kind of savings? So, Mr. Bumgardner?
Yeah, there's a, I, I want to start with talking about where we've been and kind of where we're at. So if you could go to the leases that were signed, these are five-year leases. So when you look at our student MacBooks, we just paid our last payment on those. When you look at our teacher MacBooks, we have just right out a year, and those will be paid for. Apple TVs, which allow the computers to talk with a television, another year, and those will be paid for. And then the iPads, which we use K through five currently, we have just over a year, and those will be paid for. When you look at five-year leases for technology, just so you know, that is not a recommendation you'll get from me. That's too long to take technology out, in my opinion. That is something that, with our recommendation tonight, for the, the six through 12, we will most likely either pay cash for them, or we will do a two-year lease with them. We will pay cash for all teacher devices. Just something of marrying ourselves to a five-year lease is not what I would consider wise, especially with things like Apple TVs. Those things that we've been paying on now for multiple years is not something that you'll most likely see in a recommendation from me. You know, something I say to Chad and, and Jay often is, if there's no margin, there's no mission. And we have to, the, the thought years ago that the Apple devices would be the only thing that teachers would need in the classroom is just not the way it's worked out. Often, we have needs for textbooks. We have needs for different resources for the classroom. And we're not able to meet those because right now, we're paying a lease payment of right out a million dollars a year to Apple. And those are not what we'll be looking at going forward in that we'll be making recommendations that meet the needs of our students, yet we are able to supply resources in another manner. So right now, today, we are looking to go out to bid for a teacher device, which will be a 15-inch Windows laptop, which will also have a hard drive with it. That'll, is, is the most able to meet the needs of our teachers. We will go out to bid for a student device, which will be 11-inch Windows laptop. And in our next proposal, we will also go out to bid for 50 interactive displays. And as I go through this, I want you to understand that when Chad and Jay went through this process, it just took right out a year. We're not giving a device that will not do the things that our teachers are doing in the classroom. We will, we'll be able to supply that, but we also have more flexibility going forward. With this, and all these are estimates, but I want you to know that with this recommendation tonight, we'll be saving just under $750,000. And, and, and yet, we feel good that we will be able to also supply them with an excellent device. If you go to that next one, this is kind of some good information. As we looked at this, the current student device refresh cost is right at $700. The current teacher device cost is right at $1,000. That's if we refresh back with what we have now. The, what we're going out to bid for, most likely will run right around $450. We hope it'll be less. And our teacher device cost is $550. Again, we hope it'll be less. That's right at $250 per student, and teacher device is $450 per stu, or per teacher in savings. Again, we will be selling our students to a company that will buy our student devices. We hope to have a little under $400,000 there, in which we'll be able to put down. So our total refresh cost will be right around $1 million for student devices. And our, our teacher device cost is right around $167.5. Again, we're going out to bid on these. These are estimates. We plan to for sure pay cash for the teacher devices. And then we'll look at the student devices, possibly doing a two-year lease on those. Those are again, grade six through 12. And we have every inclination that our technology department thinks we can get four to five years out of these devices. So I, I feel good about this. I feel good about the process. And I also think it's, think it's a financial decision for this district to give us more flexibility to provide classroom materials, to fly, provide resources for our teachers. And, and again, as Chad said, we have yet to find data that shows the device leads to achievement. We just do not have that data, nor does anyone else. So we feel like we're providing a good resource, and yet as I go back to say, we're having some margin so that they can better pursue their mission. At this time, I'll take on any questions.
One other thing to reiterate is, when we're refreshing the, the teacher device, there's going to be some transition. As you know, the refresh for the teacher device is not until next January two thousand and twenty-one, when that, when that lease is up. So there's some transition. We do have some power users of the MacBook, and so we've had some questions asked for some of our teachers. Would they be able to buy back the MacBook by, let's say Diamond Assets is going to give us four hundred dollars for this? Would the teacher be able to use this MacBook or purchase this MacBook? The one thing we've decided as a group and with technology, that is fine if they want to buy this back. However, we are going to transition to the new device. This will not be supported by technology. So they'll have that whole year next year, they'll have two devices, they'll have a teacher device, which is a HP, and they'll have this because it's off of the lease. So then they will actually have an option to purchase this device. However, we will not support this device after the following year. So they'll be expected to use the HP. So we know there's going to be a little bit of professional development that's going to be used. So we want our teachers to have the same device as our students, especially when you're looking at copy and pasting. And this is only for, for teachers and students in grade six through twelve who will have a new device. And then this will then have an effect on TBR, which will be a lower cost. We just need to figure out what that cost will be when those RFPs go out. So we're looking to keep at the, the iPads at this time, at the, at the elementaries, and also the MacBooks for the elementary teachers, because having the same device as the students do. So that is the plan moving forward with that, because right now the iPads are, are something that we can afford. They've come down in price, I believe they're like two hundred and fifty dollars an iPad, so we feel like that iPad, we can lock down. We feel like it's the best tool right now for our elementary teachers. So that has not been decided, obviously the lease has not come up. And we'll probably do the same process similar to what we did for the six through twelve.
I'll just say from the very first night that I was appointed to the board back in, what, March of two thousand and sixteen, we were having discussions around one-to-one and technology that we're using in classroom. That evening, we were discussing our second phase of how we were going to do one-to-one. And I would just say I've been frustrated from the beginning for what we were paying for these. I know, Mr. Doherty, we've had conversations about TBR specifically, and my, my voting record shows my frustration with that, with only one yes vote regarding technology in the classroom, as far as the one-to-one. I'm really appreciative of the effort. I think we had a really good salesman in the past from Apple, apparently. And I, I really appreciate the homework being done on this and looking at, one, a way to still use technology wisely in the classroom, being, I think we've matured greatly. I think we were mature in our second phase of going to one-to-one. We didn't just jump into it blindly, like we did, I think, when we originally introduced it. But look, lowering TBR is great, understanding and being mature about its place in the classroom. I think we've consistently done that, and I hope we'll continue to do that. It sounds like we are. Just looking at the timeline and how we've factored, or put in certain factors towards this decision has been responsible, and I appreciate that. So thank you for continuing to mature in your approach to one-to-one learning in the classrooms, understanding its place, and for being fiscally responsible with it. I have not been a fan of the five-year leases. To look at refreshing for total cost of what we're just slightly above what we're paying for one year on a lease, that is huge, and that's huge savings and allows us to do other things. I think that these have been, because of the, how expensive it's been, I think it's been some sunken cost. And so I really appreciate the effort putting into this and the maturity that this team has approached it with, so. I'm thrilled to see this, and I really hope that these estimates come to fruition as close to, as closely as they've been presented tonight. So thank you.
And you know, one other thing to, to reiterate, you know, you have the cost of the bags and, you know, Mr. Ashley and, and I know Mr. Peters and Mr. Bumgarner, we spoke today about the process with the bags. The bags are a big piece, a component of keeping our break-fix rates down. So we will continue to use the same bag we're using for the MacBooks. This, the new device will fit in those cases. So we'll continue to reuse those cases. What we're doing now is when they become seniors, after those seniors are done with those bags, we have them professionally cleaned, and then sixth graders get brand-new bags. So that's how we're kind of using that process, and then students keep their bags from year to year. So we are, we're saving ninety thousand dollars not going out and getting brand-new bags every year. So that's the process to try to keep, again, fiscally responsible when, when we're doing this.
Well, here's the big question. Scott, what are you putting us on? Look, look at who you're speaking to before you-
Going back to pencil and paper. That way I know you can operate it.
Well, I, I would kind of reiterate some of what Reed said. I mean, just rough estimates. If we go out to bid like that, it's going to save two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our families over the next three or four years. So I mean, that's obviously a positive. I'm just trying to go back to what we were, how we thought process, our thought process was four years ago on this, and I think one of the reasons why we stuck with Apples, because it wasn't going to, we didn't feel like it was going to be a seamless going from another device. Well, I think that's four years old, and obviously times have changed, and, and technology has changed incredibly. So those were two things. So Apple's not in, and did you say Chromebook will not be, it has to be a Windows-based unit is what's going out to bid?
Yes, that's, that's currently correct.
Okay, and on, I'm looking here at table one on our attachment here. And there are some minimum requirements. Are there going to be any alternates? So I know it says like a minimum of eleven-inch HD or larger on the screen. What if a company comes in with a twelve, but they think they can be cheaper with an eleven? I mean, are there going to be some attachments onto that?
We, we did give some specifics to make sure that we got two different devices as far as part of this bid. So as far as alternates, things of that nature, I, I don't know specific if we will get anything greater than what we put out, but I know we will narrow this down to two devices to make our choice.
Okay. Let's see. I'm assuming with the, with the new device, whatever it may be, it's going to be similar to break-fix fee with the Apple. I know chargers were, was always a discussion. I mean, is everything going to be kind of the same?
It's, it'll be very similar, and, and the one thing is that Jay and Scott and I, we've talked about, we're trying to think about, you know, how can we lower TBR even more? You know, that break-fix fee is something, and the one thing we talked about possibly is, you know, student supplies. You know, when you look at supply lists for a student that's in kindergarten, you know, third, fourth, fifth grade, there are supplies, let's say, twenty-five glue sticks, you know. We're looking at school supply lists as well to take care of, so, you know, that will take some burden off as well. But a, as of right now, we're looking at the same, you know, charger and fees at this, at this point in time, yes. But one thing we're looking at is that break-fix fee is, you know, if we're going to open up registration this year, and if you do online registration before the end of school, we're looking at possibly giving like a ten-dollar fee off of your break-fix fee. You know, we're trying to be able to set, you know, save people money on that, and also incentive to, to get people registered. So those are some things that are coming down the pike that we're trying to, to, to iron out, what those school supplies and TBR, they all kind of go and hinge. So those are things we're working on.
So no matter the device, we'll probably self-insure again?
Yes, correct.
And no matter, we do own them again, just like we do with these. Lease terms, Mr. Bumgarner was saying anything under a two-year, three-year, four-what, what's?
Most likely, we will look at a two-year lease.
Okay.
So that we, and, and I talked to Tom today, he says five years on these. I, I will, will budget for four.
Okay. What's our pay, what do you anticipate our payment schedule being on that? A four-year payment or a two-year payment?
A two-year.
So two-year lease, so then anything after that, okay. And I know my family's as guilty as this is any, but with a Windows-based unit, can I bring my own? Is that going to be able to be opened up again?
Yes, currently, right now, we have a hundred and twenty families that have purchased their own device, Apple device. So if they continue to have their own Apple device, they'll be able to bring that in, that will be, that'll suffice. So one thing we want to put in there, especially, that's why we pulled that, those handbooks, are what are those specifications going to be? And the thing we talked about even today is communicating with those a hundred and twenty families and saying, that's fine, you can bring your Apple device. You're not going to be penalized even though we're going to a Windows device. So that is something that will be communicated to, to our families.
And the compatibility, compatibility then of that Apple with the new Windows stuff is-
It should not be an issue at all. You can still get some of the numbers. They look a little bit different between numbers and Excel.
And in particular with the, with the displays that you're going to, the new displays that we'll have inside the school?
They'll, they'll still be able to use those, and especially our learning management system, Canvas, will still work well on Windows and on an Apple device.
That was my last question.
Just not to get too far in the weeds here, but I think is, is a real key here, is how much, and Tom, if you'd come up and talk a little bit about the, the management of these devices as compared to an Apple device, and kind of how Apple has you monopolized with repairs and such as, and not to go too far into it, but just the ease of management that goes with switching to a Windows device?
All right, and stop me if I start going too deep into anything of the topics, but the, I mean, PCs are around. The Windows laptops are the same as the PCs, just a mobile version of it. So these have been around, they, they're still around, they have been around, they've been, you know, teachers and, and students are very familiar with them. It's not like a really huge transfer of, of knowledge or something they have to learn. But what we're thinking is, is that generally, in the, in the Windows world, there is actual competition. So when we're going, when we're going out to bid, it's like when we went out and bid for Apple products, we sort of bid against ourselves, and then they promise they'll go back and get the deep discounts for us, but that's not real competition. So in the Windows environment, there's actually going to be competition, and companies were bidding on this. And so typically in those environments, the, the part, or prices for parts and replacements, there's more standardization. We were seriously looking into maybe having students get involved with repairing. But the parts in general, replacement parts in general will be less expensive, and so that will help also families when they have to pay for a major repair type of, of situation, that helps as well. So management-wise, I mean, PCs are very well-known by us. We, it's, you know, MacBooks, we're good at them now to manage them, because we've also had multiple years of, but they're more complex, and there's a lot of moving parts. And for testing and assessments, it's taken a lot of work, and we do a lot of stuff behind the scenes with scripting and other types of things to manage those, to be, have them be functional. So PCs, we are very familiar with how to manage them. There will be some learning curve on, on doing this enterprise level of, of mobile management on the PCs. But those things are what we work on over the next six to, to eight months. But it, it should be simpler, we're expecting to be simpler, and it should be less expensive to move forward.
Last thing, Tom, would you also talk about trends within the state and, and how the state's moving in, as far as refreshes?
Yeah, we, we did, we took some data from the DOE, and we just sort of looked, and we went through this year-long process. We said, well, what are other people using? And that's always seems to be a pretty typical question. And around the state, there is a mass majority of districts using Chromebooks. A hundred and eighty-some out of the, was it two forty districts out there? A hundred and eighty-some use Chromebooks out there. About sixteen or eighteen of them use Apple, or Apple products. And, and right in the middle there, I think there was maybe, my numbers are adding up, right, twenty, thirty, forty of them use Windows laptops. And so, again, we, we took a lot of factors, you know, into, into account, and, and the Chromebook is something that we've continued to look at. We'll continue to explore, probably continue to sort of introduce them at various stages in, as, as usage in the, in the district. But as, as the next stage of this, I think the Windows laptop is, is going to be, you know, a good choice.
Thank you. I just have a comment and a question. I think my first comment would be, I think the reason we're finally looking at this now is five years ago, there was just lip service given to non-Apple products, and that's because there were three different people in the administrative positions, and no one needs to respond to that. But I think we, we spent two percent of our energy exploring non-Apple products, and that's obviously changed. So thank you for bringing this back to us. And my other question, my, my question is, I know when we, when we did the MacBooks and we did the elementary iPads, we kind of squeezed some, a final year or two out of the original iPads. And maybe Tom can help answer this question. Is there any reason we need to do this right now, the change, or can we squeeze another year or two out of the Apple devices that we have right now?
You're talking about the MacBooks right here?
Yeah.
Current ones? Tom, did you want to answer that one?
It's the same scenario. We're still looking at another year out. That actually was something discussed over, over the year as well. We talked that long and hard as far as the possibility of, of going another year. Because as Scott mentioned earlier, you know, the five-year lease thing is, is tough, and it just locks you into a perpetual lease payment every single year. And when you have a better leasing model, or no leasing model at all, then you have those off-years where that money is available that used to be paid on, on leasing. So, you know, that five-year lease extension has handcuffed us pretty significantly. But no, it was an option, it was thoroughly, you know, discussed, and it was, you know, one of the last things, you know, even a few weeks ago, it was a possibility. You know, even just to talk about things more, because there's still a lot of, I mean, it's changed hard. And so there's always a desire from, from some individuals that wanted to talk about this even a little bit longer. I think that the sooner we start moving forward with, with focusing on the right things and, and having that flexibility in spending, it was an option. We chose not to recommend going another year, but we will continue to have some of those devices. When we do sell them back, we'll hold back some of those devices for spare devices or other user groups supporting the elementary devices as well. That's something else to look at, is when we're refreshing, you know, other, the iPads are potentially might be a, a candidate to do that for another year and have an off-year with those iPads as well, depending on their condition. But long story short is, it was definitely discussed, it was decided not to move in that direction, but typically, and, and moving forward, you know, that's sort of, we, we look at the device condition and how it's functioning, and then, you know, we'll make a recommendation to either replace it or, or possibly go another year. Because we've done that in the past, or we just sort of put them in semi-retirement. That's typically been the model also, is that we refreshed, but then we sort of put those oldest, oldest devices sort of in semi-retirement, used for backups, used for other user groups, and, and went that way. I hope that answered.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I think so. I, I just am looking at it as if we could get a year or two more out of these, then we wouldn't have that lease payment for two years, and then you know, we'd go, or do you take, can you take these and put them down at the elementary level for classroom sets? I don't know. I mean, you get a hundred and twenty-five dollars for these, which I don't know. I mean, you drive your car till it's got a hundred and seventy-five thousand on it, or two hundred and twenty-five thousand on it, so I don't, I don't know. Just a thought.
Well, the other thing we talked about that was kicked around, did you go, you know, we talked, was it grades four through, or five through eight would have a different device than the high school? That was one of the thoughts we thought about too. And then having some of these devices given to the high school and you're fresh at the middle school, but then we thought, when we were talking to the committee and people, we thought, well, okay, then you have a different learning curve for a device at the middle school, and just thinking you have multiple children, and you have multiple devices. So if you have, you know, five children, you have a couple at the elementary that have an iPad, then you have somebody that has a Windows device, then you have somebody that has a MacBook. So, you know, we looked at all those, but we felt like, you know, the best option was to go to something with a keyboard. We currently do have keyboards at the elementary that they can use for testing with the iPads, and we felt like that works pretty well. And we just felt like it was another, a breakpoint there, just going from six through twelve with the same device. And so, and again, then also the, the, the buyback from Diamond Assets would go down significantly if you keep it another year. So those were all weighted into our decisions, so.
I had two, one more comment, kind of half-comment, half-question. One, for those that are, are here and, and perhaps watching on live stream, the RFP or the, the requirements that we're asking for the bids on are available in the public content. So if they wanted to see the specifications of the, the models that we're looking for, that information is available. If you're not sure how to find that, email Gary McClellan, he'll help you out. No, but you can email admin member, whoever, to, to find out how to find that, but that information is public and, and available. Obviously, we're not, we don't have the, all the questions answered as far as what the bids will be and what device you can provide on your own, all those details yet, but that information is there. And then one thing that's come up, and again, I don't want to get in the weeds too much either, but in regards to TBR, that's come up. Obviously, the focus is bringing that down. Obviously, the focus is bringing that down. Um, obviously, we're one of the few states in the US that still has TBR. We do have some very small school corporations in the area that, that cover that for their students, but again, they're much smaller. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, not really an option for us unless we take away from another, uh, piece of the pie somewhere else. That, that's not really an option for us to eliminate that completely. As, because again, as Mr. Warpup has pointed out many times and wisely so, you pay for one thing, you have to take it from somewhere else. And, poor, sorry, Mr. Baumgartner. But I just wanted to make that point tonight as well, that we're making considered efforts, considered efforts to lower TBR in the future. However, that's, it's not a feasible option for us to eliminate it, again, unless we take from somewhere else. Correct?
It's exactly correct. Um, it, it's, uh, it's unfortunate, um, that, uh, you know, the idea of a free education, um, you know, i- is not really free. Um, but, uh, tho- those are something that in our state, they, they, uh, allow us. And when I say allow us, I mean, um, they require us basically. If we're going to have these type of, of tools for our kids, if we're going to have textbooks, if we're gonna, uh, purely by the cost, um, we're gonna have to pass some of that on to our, our, our patrons.
And again, I appreciate that we're doing everything we can to lower that. Uh, you know, I have four children in the school corporation and, uh, all of us have, uh, real, fa- kids, family members, whoever, but it's, every time I come home from a board meeting, we approve TBR for the next year, I have a fun conversation with my wife. And, um, you know, we look at, we plan ahead for that, like so many other families in the corporation. But I wanted to make that point tonight, that we are cognizant of that, we are sensitive to that and doing the best we can, and I appreciate the efforts on that.
Thank you. Many of the corporations that cover the TBR cost have a operations fund referendum that passed too. Just to consider. Well, any other questions or discussions?
Uh, one more. This, I mean, this will free up, I should say free up money, but will allow us flexibility on supplemental material going forward. Because I, I mean, I, I'm, like Reed said, we're all parents or have family members and that's one of the biggest thing is we're, sometimes I think that we get too reliant on a device and there's other components. I mean, it's been in my house several times where it says if I could just have a textbook to s- look at, it would be more beneficial than what we're doing right now. So, going forward, that will allow us maybe to, to pursue other avenues to accompany the device. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the recommendation to advertise?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, advertising for one-to-one student device refresh for grades six through twelve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion or questions?
I think we've exhausted that.
Yeah, hearing nothing further, we'll vote on the motion to approve. I think you need to swap screens. All right, motion passes seven zero. Um, move on to item E three, request for pernit- for permission to advertise for fifty interactive displays.
Um, yeah, a- a- as I mentioned, um, both, uh, in an email and also tonight. Um, tonight I'm asking, uh, to go out for bid for fifty interactive displays. Um, these displays are, uh, basically, um, probably what you guys remember approving maybe eight to ten years ago as smart boards. Um, and this is the new version that comes in a, a, a TV-like, uh, component that you can touch, you can interact with, talks to the computers. Um, just, uh, just a newer version of the smart board. And, and, uh, we've, uh, been demoing these throughout the district. We've tried to get these out in teachers' hands, um, very successfully and, uh, have had a lot of positive feedback. Um, just so you know a little bit about where we're coming from there, uh, we're, we're not real equitable across our district when it comes to technology. Um, we're looking at putting these in the new Roanoke Elementary, uh, a- and that was as part of the, uh, part of the plan there. Um, a- and we, we also are looking at, um, we have about forty to fifty smart boards at Riverview that are, um, eight to ten, twelve years old, that are needing replaced. Um, at this time, we don't have near that amount in, at Crestview. So, we are looking to not only replace this, but also get more equity of technology throughout our district. Um, these fifty smart boards will be, uh, one in each grade level, will be placed one in each grade level at the elementary and then ten at Riverview, ten at Crestview. Um, a- and you may ask, uh, why are these not going to the high school? Well, the high school, um, is, is, i- it has been determined that they need less of the hands-on touching and more of just a flat-screen TV that projects information up there. So, we've went to that, obviously a much cheaper, um, a, a cheaper replacement there. So, these interactive TVs that we're going out to for fifty of them, we expect them to run anywhere between forty-five hundred and five thousand dollars apiece. Um, we will be paying for these, um, through the two thousand seventeen GO bond, um, that, that we have some money left on, um, that we need to spend. And, uh, and this will be, uh, uh, these are, uh, much longer-term solution than the smart boards and needing replacement. We expect these to last anywhere from eight to ten years. So, um, and we hope to have them throughout our district within the next couple and have more equity throughout our district when it comes to technology.
And one thing to add on, on the smart boards, especially at the middle school level. Um, when we first started with the smart board, the smart boards, we, we wrote a grant, that's when I was principal at Crestview many years ago. We wrote a grant, were able to get smart boards, uh, at, at, uh, at Crestview and some at, uh, Riverview. Riverview then went ahead, they had some extra money in bonds that they had put away and they used that money to buy every teacher a smart board, where not every teacher at Crestview got a smart board. Well, now, all the smart boards at, uh, at, at Riverview are dying a slow death now at this point. So, and also the ones over at Crestview through that grant are basically having issues with the technology. They don't, they don't make a lot of the parts and now it's, it's more feasible to buying, buying new rather than trying to replace these parts. So, that's when we're talking about equity and access. And Scott talks, you know, ten at Riverview, ten at Crestview, trying to refresh those. In the past, it's been, let's put some at one building, then we'll get to the next building. But, uh, as one of our goals is equity and access, as Scott said, is, is our goal to try to get, you know, one in each grade level at the elementary. Um, and those have been a success. Uh, just over at Horseman in Melissa Ross's classroom and she uses it every day. Um, so, we're trying to get feedback from teachers before we can move on, um, to then expand that refresh of that technology. So, that's kind of where we're at and what we were thinking.
Is this replacing fifty new ones with, with fifty old ones or is this?
This is a cycle to try to get these, later on we'll end up replacing those. Instead of screens at Riverview and Crestview, we will go with those digital displays.
But as far as e- you mentioned equity throughout the school district, I mean, does Salamone have, are they short versus Horseman versus any other? Or, I mean, is it fifty out and fifty new ones in? Or are we, do we have thirty in the district? I mean, I don't, I don't even know.
Well, Scott, I mean.
Yeah, um, basically, um, what we currently have, and Tom will have the exact numbers on how many we currently have, but what we're doing is we're taking ten of the failing ones at Riverview, replacing those ten. So, there's no new ones at Riverview. We're replacing those with these interactive displays, adding ten to Crestview. Um, and we are currently, um, have a few sprinkled out of our elementary, nothing uniformed, and we will put one in each grade level at our elementaries.
If, if I, if there are four sections in an elementary, so there's gonna be one, is, I, I mean, you know, every teacher's different. Is one of those or two of those not going to use that? I mean, are we going to, I, I, I mean, to be fair?
Well, what, what we've seen, and this is what I've seen just when observing, is you will have some teachers.
I, I know.
I, I don't want to use this at this point. I, and then the other teacher will say, I really like this. So, that was the one thing that we wanted to see before we went out and purchased a number of these, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be sitting there unused. And so, what we're seeing is if we do refresh, we have a lot of training to do if we're going to.
But that, that's my, my concern is that five grand, four, five grand a pop in a three or four-section school. I mean, there might be twelve hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred dollars that doesn't go to a classroom that may benefit other ways, I guess.
I think it used to be more principal-driven. I remember at Northwest, Mr. Dubois used some of his.
Correct.
Individual discretionary funds to purchase a couple of them and then use them in his STEM lab. And so, I think until now, it was just, it was principal-driven really.
And that's what we saw and that's why we're trying to, as that equity and access, is trying to be able to have, everybody has the same opportunity, doesn't matter what building you're in, you'll have access to that, that technology. So, that's why we're kind of going with this approach.
One other thing, Mr. Baumgartner said that I want to clarify is none of us were here eight to ten years ago, nor were we here twenty, thirty, or forty years ago on this board. So, whatever board made that decision eight to ten years ago, it was no one sitting at these tables that was part of that decision, so.
We'll get our finger, somebody's pointing finger ten years anyway.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? None? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the recommendation?
I'll make a motion to request permission to advertise for fifty interactive displays.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All right, motion passes six one. We'll move on to the consent agenda, items F one through eleven.
Yes, we're asking the board approval for, um, eleven items in the consent agenda. Um, F one, we're asking approval for regular meeting minutes for December sixteenth. Um, consent agenda for executive session minutes for December sixteenth. Approval for, uh, professional leave requests. Uh, we have several, um, professional leave requests, um, that deal with, um, I learned math, um, to deal with argument-driven inquiry, emergency telecommunications instructors course, um, and focus on inclusion. So, we have several there. Um, then dealing with, uh, need approval for certified employee resignation. Luanne Watson from Huntington North High School, um, has resigned effectively in twelve, twelve nineteen. Um, classified employee resignations, Danielle Jones, paraprofessional at Riverview, Ryan Wall, network engineer, um, Anna Walters, um, custodian at Huntington North High School. Employee, ECA employee resignation, Mr. Pete Eckert is resigning from assistant softball coach at Huntington North High School, effective eleven twenty-three nineteen. New classified employees, uh, Mr. William Barky will be a super-sub bus driver. Amy Beal, food service pool, Horseman. Carol Davis, custodian Huntington North High School. Claudia Hoffman, food service pool, Huntington North High School. F eight, long-term substitutes. Cindy Kelly will be the math long-term substitute. She will take the place of Luanne Watson. And Ariel Davison will be a long-term substitute recommendation for Lincoln in art. And then we have an unpaid leave of absent request from Amy Hack, paraprofessional at Crestview. F ten, request to accept donations. We have a number of these. Um, the first one is Andrews Elementary's requesting permission to accept two Huntington County Community Foundation grants. The first has been awarded to first-grade teachers Britton Friar and Marcy Roll in the amount of seven hundred and fif- forty-five dollars to fund the purchase of new phonics materials, including, uh, rhyming games, magnetic letters, and sound matching games. The second has been awarded to kindergarten teachers Stephanie Till and Danielle Doctor in the amount of center of fifty dollars to fund the purchase of fifty-six durable items that will foster creativity and critical thinking through STEAM activities. Our second donation is Horseman Elementary's requesting permission to accept a donation of a box of crayons for every student on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty, on National Crayon Day from Miller's Mary Manor in Huntington. Three, Lincoln Elementary's requesting permission to accept two Huntington County Community Foundation grants. The first has been awarded to the first-grade teachers Joe Keller, Haley Schmidt, Cassidy Sheehan, Jill, and Jill Slagel with the purchase of twenty, um, newies, uh, Jot eight-point-five-inch doodle pad drawing boards, which are LCD writing tablets and leveled reading book sets. The second has been awarded to fourth-grade teachers Becky Livingston, Lori Klein, Nika Palmer in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-four dollars to purchase Ensemble Math toolboxes filled with plethora of necessary materials. Four, Roanoke Elementary's requesting permission to accept, uh, Huntington County Community Foundation grant award to their fifth-grade teachers Mary Greedless, Jamie Pagan, and Erin Toll in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-five dollars for the purchase of supplies to create school-wide information station, offering hands-on learning activities. Also, Roanoke is requesting permission to accept a donation of four hundred and thirty hats and pairs of gloves from the Roanoke Lions Club and the local Lassus gas station for their students. Six, Salamone Elementary's requesting permission to accept four Huntington County Community Foundation grants. The first has been awarded to third-grade teacher Kristi Nguyen Swander in the amount of four hundred and thirty dollars to purchase science kits to discover how the pulley, wheel, and axle wedge, lever, inclined plane, and the screw make work easier. The second has been awarded to physical education teacher Jamie Cale in the amount of five hundred dollars to purchase components necessary for students to participate in cardio drumming. The third has been awarded to fourth-grade teacher Leah Street in the amount of four hundred and ninety-nine dollars to purchase whiteboard and flip chart ESOL, two-snap circuit kits, paper cut circuits, classroom kits, and eight ThinkFun roller coaster challenge STEM kits. The fourth has been awarded to kindergarten teachers Nicole Warpup and Heather Moore in the amount of six hundred and fifty-three dollars to purchase math materials that contain hands-on learning strategies. Seven, Crestview Middle School's requesting permission to accept four Huntington County Community Foundation grants. The first has been awarded to Andy Helms and Cheryl Sims in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight dollars to purchase STEM kits that encourage critical thinking in the areas of engineering, ele- electrical, and forms of motion. The second has been awarded to Brian Ringo in the amount of four hundred dollars to purchase new music to allow students to perform music from other cultures and various languages. The third has been awarded to Liesel Hopper in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six dollars to purchase non-expandable and expandable supplies to cut and glue together, um, the recycled cardboard sculptures. The fourth has been awarded to Marla Becker and Eric Gurdis in the amount of five hundred and eighty-seven dollars to purchase ten sets of can jam and fifteen Frisbees. Riverview Middle School is requesting permission to accept a Huntington County Community Foundation grant award to Diane Miller and Marta Wall Fogel in the amount of five hundred dollars to purchase plants and planters, tables and chairs, a variety of stools and standing computer desk. Number nine, Huntington North has, uh, high school is requesting permission to accept a Huntington County Foundation grant award to family and consumer sciences teachers, Dana Stump, Jan Hildebrand, and Stephanie Wyon in the amount of seven hundred and forty-nine dollars to purchase a small storage building to secure, se- securely house, uh, all of the garden tools and equipment of their garden as well as fertilizer and dirt. Moving on to F eleven, accounts payable and payroll vouchers. So, we're requesting, um, board approval for the eleven items on the consent agenda.
Need a break after that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda, items F one through eleven?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to pull a particular item out of the consent agenda to vote separately on that item? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve items F one through eleven.
Can I make a comment before you adjourn? Don't wait for the results and I'll make a comment.
Motion passes. Motion passes seven oh.
I just want to make a comment on item ten, on accepting donations. If you look at that, between those, uh, what's listed there, around eight thousand dollars of donations, um, were made to school corporations to support our, our students and, uh, from, between the Huntington County Community Foundation, uh, Miller's Mary Manor, others, Roanoke Lions Club, um, and local Lassus Gas Stations. If I missed anyone, I apologize, but that's just wonderful, and we appreciate the community support for our students. Um, that's absolutely fantastic. That's the largest amount I've seen in a while that we've approved in donations, so thank you to those that are supporting our students in that way.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting while we then open a meeting of the Board of Finance. So, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion-
No, I don't have to do that? Thought we always did that in the past.
We need to adjourn the Board of Finance.
Okay. Okay, at the end. All right, now, we don't need to adjourn this meeting. We'll move on to G one, election of officers of the Board of Finance. And...
Normally, we recommend that we follow the same officers as we do for the school board.
Okay. So, would anyone like to make a motion regarding election of officers to the Board of Finance?
I'll make a motion that we retain the board officers as the officers of the Board of Finance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to elect the officers of the Board of Finance. All right, that motion passes seven zero, and then I'll entertain under G two, a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll just do a voice vote on that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, move on to H one, new Roanoke Elementary construction.
Yeah, um, do have some new photos tonight. Um, it's coming along nicely, uh, we can't ask for any better weather. Um, they've been able to pour concrete even right up till, um, last week when we had their meeting, they were still pouring concrete. So, the thought that it'd be the middle of January and we're still, uh, doing sidewalks and such, that's, that's a positive for us, so, um, it's a good thing. Uh, as you can see, uh, and if you've been by there lately, uh, there, there's a brick on the front, it really is coming along nicely, it, it looks nice. Um, and, uh, we're starting to really, the footprint's set, and it's, it's, uh, really starting to look like a school. And so much so that, uh, Tom, with technologies, going through, making sure our, our infrastructure's, um, uh, plan is good. Um, next month, we have Ken Akins going in there to make sure the kitchen equipment's in. Um, uh, we're scheduling tours, uh, for you guys here in the spring, and that will be able to get you in there. And, uh, and then the next plan is, uh, uh, that of, uh, the transition, and, uh, that's when we'll really get fun, so. Um, uh, no, no reason has been given to me that we are not on schedule or on time at this point. Um, just pray for good weather, and, uh, we've had it, so.
And I also now have the water I need after this weekend, pond's full.
Yeah, yeah, we were a little worried when, uh, you got some frozen ground and, you know, three or four inches of rain.
You wouldn't want to make it any smaller.
Yeah, so.
All right, we'll move on to I, item I one, volume thirty, number two, uh, NEOLA policies.
Yeah, this is a second read, and will require board action. Um, these are policies, uh, on, and I'll just kind of go through these again. Yeah, this is a second read, um, policy fourteen twenty-two, revised nondiscrimination equal, um, employment opportunity. And again, these are policies through Ne- NEOLA, um, that have been revised, and we worked through, uh, Amy, um, Rudolph, myself, uh, Mrs. Gray went through these policies to make sure that they, um, are in, in order for, through Huntington County Community Schools. So, um, again, policy sixteen sixty-two is anti-arrestment. Twenty-two sixty, revised nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity. Um, twenty-seven hundred, revised annual performance report. Third, uh, thirty-one twenty point zero-two, revised employment of substitutes. Thirty-one twenty-two, revised nondiscrimination equal opportunity. Thirty-one thirty-one, revised reduction in force, RIF, and certified staff. Thirty-three sixty-two, anti-arrestment. Forty-one twenty-two, um, nondiscrimination equal employment opportunity revised. Forty-one sixty-two, revised drug and alcohol testing of CDL holders and other employees and who perform safety-sensitive functions. Forty-three sixty-two, revised anti-arrestment. Fifty-five, one seventeen, uh, revised anti-arrestment. Fifty-six thirty point zero-one, revised use of collusion restraint with students. Sixty-six ten, revised extracurricular funds. Seventy-five ten, revised use of school facilities. Seventy-five thirty point zero-two, revised staff use of personal communication devices. Eighty-three fifteen, revised information management. So, these are revisions to the policies we currently have, and we're asking for board approval on these.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed revisions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the revisions to the handbook.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, the policy updates, not the handbook.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or further discussion? All right, well, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the updates to volume thirty, number two. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to item J one, items of discussion by board members.
I just want to make one comment. I should have done this during the core values, but, uh, one of the things I've noticed in the past, whatever, six, seven months or so, is how often I'm seeing our admin team, and I'm gonna embarrass these three, but how often I'm seeing Mr. Baumgartner, Mr. Doherty, and Mr. Peters out and about at, um, activities and functions throughout the school corporation, from back to school night, to parent-teacher conferences, to, um, Christmas programs at different elementary schools. I really appreciate how I've seen all three of you, um, out and around, um, and, and being part of the, um, the buildings and, and getting out of this building, and then going and visiting classrooms and being, um, as visible and supportive as you are. I, I've even heard we've seen Mr. Baumgartner with a smile on his face.
No.
Out and about. I know, it's rumor, it's rumor, but, uh, but no, I, I appreciate that, that example that you're setting. It's great that my elementary, elementary-age children know who the school corporation administrators are, because they've talked to them, they've said hi to them, and they've seen them around their building, so each one of you, thank you for that example.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh, just a reminder that our public work session is scheduled for this Saturday, January eighteenth, starting at nine o'clock in the morning at Huntington North and the library, correct? And afterward, there'll be birthday cake and ice cream for Reed and I, because that's our birthdays, so.
What, what door do people enter in?
Door three.
Yes, correct.
Uh, any other items for discussion? All right, uh, looks like under J two, we have a proposed calendar for the two thousand twenty, July two thousand twenty to June two thousand twenty-one board meetings. Has everyone had a chance to review that?
And the only comment I would make to that, uh, calendar, a big thanks to Cindy for putting that together, and, um, there's only one date in April due to spring break there, so, um, we made that adjustment. We only had one in March previously, but we put two in March, and then there's only one in April, um, due to spring breaks.
Is that one in October due to fall break?
Yes, that is correct.
So, would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the board meeting calendar for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one?
I'll make the motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to adopt that calendar. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to K one, adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.